Or people that are already recycling, plus new households will have a cap to 15% increase.
I think you'll see the latter. I think you'll see people already recycling will recycle more. And also there will be a renewed as well.
Because it's confusing when we start talking percentages. Like, it's important to know, like, what's the formula that everybody's using so it will all...
Right.
And a minute ago, I was just saying, like, that's not what was set for last meeting. It may sound like a hurt. I'm thinking I can clarify one thing real quick, because is that that 30% participation rate is completely irrelevant and can just be thrown out the window. It doesn't impact our bottom line. It doesn't impact any of these numbers. That 30% can increase to 500%, and it doesn't change anything. The only recycling rate that actually matters is the, of all waste we're producing, what percentage of it is being recycled. I mean, if 100% of the city is participating in the program, I don't think I would really squat if we're only getting 12% in terms of the actual... So, the only rate that actually matters to this discussion is the recycling rate. The participation rate, that 30%, that's about as relevant as the weather. I mean, that's, that has, that's sound relevant, but it's got zero impact on the bottom line or on the actual recycling rate.
Well, the problem may also add too. I mean, you're, that's part of the program. You would be giving everybody else all the recycling. The number of participation, one figure would probably increase significantly. You know, especially if you're incentivizing people to recycle through a fee structure like what we have proposed.
I guess the first... Yeah, I was gonna say, I guess the first thing, we're already, we've already been giving free recycling bins for several years.
Four and a half.
And we, and we used to have a recycling coordinator, a part-time coordinator. I'm just trying to get my hands up for Adam.
Well, with all respect though, in my country, I'd actually agree the materials the rest of us have looked at, including staff, because the materials answer a lot of these questions.
I'm trying to get on the record, because a lot of people don't know that, is all I'm saying. I'm trying to speak up for people who've called and asked questions. And I said, "I would ask those questions for you."
You could have paid attention for the last six months.
I've been paying attention, Commissioner, and the problem is...
You lied to your team last month and claimed that you had missed one meeting.
I would take a point of that when he just, he said I was lying.
I didn't use your phone.
I objected to that.
We have, uh, I should, I should order tea. My, my role is to have order in the court. I already have.
Thank you.
This, uh, this kind of has some...
I read the mail.
This will be having a personal manager.
Thank you. I'm probably saying, man, I take the perception of someone saying that when, when I'm basing all these statements on what has been said, what I've read from staff and from the commission. And I'm saying that people are confused. They haven't been able, they don't have the benefit of being at every city commission meeting. Past commission meetings, we've had issues brought out and some, then the next meeting it changes. Point in fact, the 30% household number was used at the last meeting as well as 6%. And it was in the newspaper. People got confused. I'm trying to clarify that up. And I think it, I'm, I'm sorry that you decided to say someone's lying. You said that about staff and other people. I, I would say that, um, that's just not appropriate responses from a fellow board member. And I would take exception to it in the same here. I am totally agree by that.
I'm, I'm agree by taking a lie to your team and public.
And again... Mayor, can I ask you, if you have a question, Director of the Commission, what are you saying is being a lie?
Because I'm letting you claim, last month, last month, I pointed out that you haven't participated, that you rarely participated in these discussions for the last six months. And your response was that you maybe missed one meeting, but other than that, you didn't get a, you know, you, other than that, you maybe got to use the bathroom and get a drink. And those of us who have actually been here know that not only did you rarely participate in discussions, you left a number of meetings early and you skipped a number of meetings outright. And your claim that you maybe only missed one meeting is factually inaccurate and you know it.
Mayor? No. I, I would say, um...
We got public records proof. You can tell that it's not...
I understand that, Commissioner, but I've been here participating and I've been numerous times talked about and been put in the newspaper. So, I think, uh, I think except to do those exaggerations, and I am here to say, I've been participating. I've read the material. I've asked questions of staff numerous times. And I'm saying it is confusing to the public based on the telephone calls that I've received. And what people are saying, they read something in the newspaper and then they did another thing in the mail from the city. And it's, and it's something different. So, I don't know why Commissioner, uh, one of the members of the commission, dressed in a, uh, fall of the form, would, would accuse another member of, of lying when that is in fact just not true.
You're still denying that you, you, you missed on these meetings?
I haven't missed a meeting, Commissioner. I haven't missed a meeting. I, I'll go back and look at, uh, why don't you, after me, why don't you point out the meetings and I'll, I'll look at those. And I've been here, except for a couple of times when I was out of town and one time I was sick.
Okay, now we're up to two. All right, so we went from one to two, three.
I just, I'm not...
You've been at work three.
I'd say, I, I find it very distasteful that members of the commission tend to exaggerate things. It's happened a number of times. And I would just ask that we quit trying to hide the issue of this. The whole thing we're talking about is a pay throw thing. So, members of the, of the commission strongly support it. Others, based on telephone calls have been asked, say, "Please stand up for us, those of us that don't understand, those of us that cannot handle the cards. People have been in tears worried about that." And just because we disagree, I don't think it's enough reason for someone to attacking another member of the government or somebody.
Without, without attacking Commissioner, the deeper point I made about his lack of participation boils down. I mean, I thought some folks were confused about this as well. And the folks I've talked to who are the most confused are the folks who have just spoken. Well, that gets into, that gets into, I'll give that up. But the, the, the point is that we've, you know, asking where the, asking where the 15% comes from. Now, those of us who have actually paid attention to this thing for the past year know where that came from. Because the entire commission and staff have been provided with stacks of, of evidence and research and reports and case studies justifying that number. And, and laying it out pretty cut and dry that pay throw programs do result in increased recycling rates. And yet, and yet, some members of this body could claim publicly that they haven't seen that evidence. Commissioner May claims he's never seen that evidence. And I'll take him at his word. I don't think he did look at it. But that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. That doesn't mean it hasn't been provided to the entire commission. It doesn't mean it hasn't been provided to staff. I mean, so the idea that these persons haven't been...
Commissioner, uh, I just wanted to add that it is somewhat disconcerting and frustrating when you do get calls from citizens who talk to other members of this body. And one example would say that, "Well, another commissioner told me that we don't even know that the recycling center is going to take any of more of our recyclers." Well, that's just an exaggeration to the public to promote fear and, and stuff of that nature about this program. It's, there's no basis in that. And it's not just once, it's not just twice, it's probably more than 10 times that I've gotten calls where a citizen has talked to another member of this body and every piece of information that citizen was given is factually incorrect.
Well, let's be honest, this specification is adopted, because I've, I've heard these complaints too. And the folks who are the most confused who have the worst information, who are the least informed are the folks who just got off the phone with Commissioner May.
Oh, come on, Neil.
It's true. I mean, some, some of this stuff I've heard, it's like, we're not gonna make allegations for saying it. As soon as it ends, there's no official company. And we don't know, but, but the point, the point being that this claim, we don't know that this will promote recycling? There's no evidence this will promote recycling? We all know that, Paul.
There's also, I've been, I've got a lot of, not a lot of emails. And there, I have to say that, I've, I've talked to them with me. I just, I'm not gonna read them on the under. People don't understand. They really don't understand. The thing that I get from them is the fact that they finally realize, on the basis that I've been getting, that the $5 a month fee is a pretty good deal. Where two years ago, where it was, it was the first time thing. And, uh, they would like to keep it as it is and without all the turmoil and anxiety and what have you, just going on with this. And, uh, so, but, there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, miss, maybe misinformation, but there's a lot of people, uh, and I think they've come in, came in with the survey that indicated a lot of people's going too fast with this stuff for them, uh, things in place. No, Commissioner Hayden.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, it's true, the pay, the pay throw program, the idea is to promote less trash. But I also know that for a family of four, I've put out two to three recycling bins right now and one small 32-gallon container. In reality, with this program, you're, we're still gonna continue full pickup. And I'm just trying to represent some citizens that have, that have called. We're still continuing full pickup. There's no extra charge for that. We're still gonna continue four times a year free pickup. I'm not quite sure what the dates are, but that will be free as well. We're gonna continue to free our waste, so no extra charge for that to make it to the curb. But instead of paying $5 a month, I could just pay $4 a month and get a 65-gallon can. And, and still get a type of container, but it doesn't promote me to use the recycled container. That I could still just throw all my trash in that because that's how much trash my household produces. And every week will still continue. So, if I were just to be plain Jane, living at her, living at her house, just because you give me a recycled container doesn't necessarily, necessarily say I'm gonna use it, but it's there in the can. So, um, I'm not sure exactly what the point I'm trying to make, but that I still can get away with a 65-gallon container for $4 a month, which is still a dollar a month cheaper than what I'm paying right now. But I don't necessarily have to change my habits.
I mean, I...
So, as many, as many people are calling saying we're trying to force them to change their ways, it's not, you don't necessarily have to change your habits. For the firebomb.
Thanks for the radio.
I guess the last, I wish people would just listen and, and not try to jump to conclusions. The point I was trying to make is that, and I have participated and I have read the material. And for them to say otherwise, it's not true. I'll say that for the last time. At the last, one of the meetings, I even said to people, folks, I can't keep up with the changes that are made from meeting to meeting. Instead, I would suggest that there be something in black and white. Trying to help move the commission along, because it seems like it's taken forever to, I, I don't remember a single issue that it's taken longer for a commission to figure out how to do something. And if there's three votes to do something, I was saying, let's move on. We've got other things we've got to deal with too that are extremely important. And I just think it's an unfair statement by any commissioner to say that I participated. When I sat there and suggested that someone put something in black and white to help move things along, and instead of trying to, to be against something and trying to, by assistance, say, "Hey, if there's support for this, move on. Figure out a way you can do it." And trying to be helpful. And so, I, I thank the record there and I'm, I'm sorry that some members have got to the point where things are not being true and exaggerated.
Uh, Commissioner Turner.
Commissioner May and I have been friends for a number of years. We just, we're very friendly outside the commission and, uh, we just disagree on, on this particular issue. But I, I want to take issue with certain things that Commissioner did say, if, if I may, with all due respect. But on one hand, we're saying that the issue is, and the citizens are saying is that we're moving too fast. But you've heard Commissioner May just say, "He's never seen an issue take this long." Well, so I don't, I, I, you can see the catch 22 this commission's in. You've got one, some of the people saying we're moving too fast. You've got some saying, "Not that they're making this long before."
That runs deeper.
That runs deeper now.
Go back with that.
That's it, Mayor.
It runs deeper now. Because go back, go back and check the records with all due respect. And the idea that we're rushing through things was started by Commissioner May. He was the first person to bring that up. And he's claiming now that he was encouraging us to move forward and help by giving input to this whole thing and whatever. We all know that. I mean, that might sound convincing. I don't, I don't even know who he's trying to convince, because we all know that it's true. Everybody in this room knows that it's true. Everybody in this room knows that it was Commissioner May who first claimed that we were rushing through things too quick. That's, that's, that's a matter of fact in public record. And in all fairness, you know, anybody who wanted to contribute, contribute constructively to this discussion, I mean, the Commissioner May was right. You know, it was, we, getting, getting this up in writing, on paper, is very important, both for our decision-making process and for the public. That's, that's absolutely important. And, you know, we brought that up within the last month and we got it done. But in all fairness, I mean, that, that, that point could have been made half a year ago or longer, but it wasn't. And I realize that Commissioner May has been participating in discussions for the past month or so. But we also all know that he didn't participate for a month after the public forum. But the, I mean, the, we're getting to, 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 for that stuff. I get that, but the polit, you know, as far as I'm concerned. It's just frustrating, because we've been trying to have this audit-engaged conversation in the community for, for eight months on this issue. And the misinformation that gets thrown out is, is stunning. And we literally have the same peo, literally have the same people claiming that we're rushing through this, that we haven't addressed all these questions. You know, that, that, uh, that a lot of this stuff hasn't even been researched or discussed thoroughly. And of course, those of us who have been researching this up and have seen the research and participated in this, have to know that, know that those things aren't true. We've got, we've got some people making those claims and at the same time, knowing that we've spent more time on this than any other decision issue. It's, it really undercut the idea that we've, we've been trying to rush through this. So, the deeper point is we got this stuff on paper now. We, I mean, we've got it on paper. We've got it cut and dried. We've got, you know, professional estimates. We have, we have financial estimates here, you know, that have been prepared by, not by fairies in the field, but by actual professional staff on hand at our direction.
Because we're, and we're based on...
Commissioner May had his hand up for me. Man, I didn't, we wanted to, who to say along here right now. I, Commissioner May.
I think I would say I...
I really did get cut off there.
You really did?
I don't think you kept it off.
You interrupted me.
Commissioner, I'll be talking like that. But they got, they let me know. Raise your hand when you, you walked on it. When you finished.
But the point, I'm, I'm trying to read this discussion. The point is that we've got this stuff on paper now. We've got the estimates. They've been prepared by professionals. We've got a grad report. It's been prepared by professionals. The estimates in here are based on local data. They're based on empirical research. They're based on case studies. They're based on consulting with other professionals who have done this before. I mean, the, we've got this funders now, so let's, I mean, let's deal with the, the information and the paper we've got and make an informed decision. But when we plan it, there's no, you know, saying there's no evidence that, or there's no reason to think that this would inherently increase recycling. I think that's been disproven repeatedly to this point. And I, I think Commissioner Hayden makes a very good point. There is nothing in this pay throw program to force anybody to recycle. I mean, under this program, I think most folks could keep doing what they're doing and still see their monthly bills reduced. I mean, it's safe to say this, when I had recycling, then they'll probably recycle a little bit more. But the deeper point is that folks could also completely eliminate their monthly bill if they choose to mitigate their waste and to recycle more. I mean, the incentive is there. The incentive is in the program. It doesn't force anybody, but it does reward people. And the deeper point is that it, it lessens our bottom line over time. And, uh, and, and I realize that the, that the pay throw fee brings in half as much revenue. But that's, to my mind, that's a good thing. I mean, we have an opportunity here to actually decrease. I mean, a lot of folks are concerned with the rate of the fee. One of the internal concerns we had is that we're lowering, right? Is that this is gonna bring in half as much revenue as currently. And, and I realize there are some folks who think that the pay throw system amount to a fee increase. It would be irresponsible of us to allow those misinformed opinions to actually affect our judgment. Because we all know for a fact, and these numbers say for a fact, that the pay throw system amount to a fee decrease. We go from bringing in 600 to 300. We all know that $4 a month is less than $60 a year. Some people don't believe that, but it's true. We all know that $0 a month is less than $60 a year. And we also see that only 3% of folks are even estimated to go for the, the larger can. So, but the point is that we can actually decrease the burden on our citizens on one hand, and that brings in less revenue, yes. But we can do it in a way that actually saves the city money in the long run. And as far as I'm concerned, I mean, fiscally, that's just a cold win-win. We save people money right now. We keep more people, citizens, we keep more money in citizens' pockets right now, and we decrease long-term costs down the road. And there's, there's one last point, you know, that I need to remind folks of before we move on. And that's that I know the mayor's gonna deny this, but the previous commission worked out the $60 garbage fee in consultation with the city manager behind closed doors before it was ever brought to the public. And I know the mayor's gonna deny it. We'll get to that. But I, but I, I can say that because I was there. I was there. I participated in the discussions. You know, I just joined the commission. I was pretty new. I was kind of, I let people like, you know, Kathy Carter, Tony Mancy, and Mayor Graham, in all fairness, kind of take it by the hand, let the unit through and say, "Well, this is how we do things." And I participated in these, some of these discussions. The mayor claims it didn't happen. But, and I've been, you know, some of them with the mayor. But, I mean, they're upset and you, you can have your pizza, pizza in a second. But the content of those discussions, this is the point I'm getting at. At that time, I asked the question. I asked, "Well, why don't we just charge enough to cover the full cost of collection while lowering taxes accordingly?" And got a, a couple of different responses. One of them, in a meeting that the mayor presumably denies ever happened, he and, he and Steve actually convinced me that it's illegal to lower taxes. You did convince me that it's illegal to lower taxes outside of a public meeting. You mean, I don't, you know, you and I both know that that's absolutely true. Say then again, you convinced me that it is illegal to lower taxes. That's why this whole idea of raising the fee and lowering taxes didn't go forward, because you all convinced me that it's illegal to do that. That, that may be true, but, but we, we had that conversation behind closed doors. I was convinced that it's illegal to lower taxes.
You and I did?
You and I did, with, with the finance director. We sorted out, the truth came out later down the road. We, we finally, eventually, after the two-lit term, yeah, it is in fact legal.
Picture, picture, put the, put the point, Commissioner May has something to say. Yeah, I'm gonna say, we're gonna move on.
Man, I would yield to you.
Here's the, here's the deeper point.
Here's the deeper point. In those conversations behind closed doors, setting out that fee, that the mayor denies ever happened, the reason, and, and Tony and, uh, Rodney Williams said this very clearly, they said this overtly. The reason they were opposed to doing that is that if we raise the fee to cover the full cost of collection, then we can't raise it anymore. So, if we raise the fee and lower taxes accordingly, then that essentially limits our ability to continue raising the fee in the future as our deficits grow. The fee was kept intentionally low. It was, the fee brought in, the fee at $5 a month brought in $600,000 a year. That was just enough money to plug that hole in our budget. It raised just enough money. And it was considered a stop sell to the public. And again, this is stuff that Tony and, and other folks said behind the scenes. They never said this publicly. Behind the scenes, they even pointed out, like, "Look, this is an easy sell. We can just point out that, you know, the $5 a month is way less than any other surrounding community is charging for garbage collection, so it'll go down relatively easy. Then we've got our foot in the door. And, and then when we need more money in the future, we can just keep raising the fee." But the point is that the, the current, it doesn't do anything, not only is it not doing anything to control the cost long term, but it was intentionally and overtly designed to be increased as our deficits increased. It doesn't control the deficits. In fact, it assumes that we'll continue to run deficits. And it gives us an avenue to just keep doing this referendums of the tax increases as we move on down the road. And that, and this is a, a direct address of Commissioner Hayden to your concerns, which are, which are valid. Your concern about, you know, what, what is, what is this fee gonna do in the future? You know, what if folks raise this fee in the future? And so, my, my point is that the current, the current standard is designed to be raised in the future as deficits increase. And there's nothing in the current structure to keep those deficits from increasing. But the point, you know, the deeper point is that a future commission can do whatever they want. And then we can, uh, they can establish a pay throw fee if we don't. They can scrap it if we do. They can go back to the flat fee. They can charge $50 a month. They can waste a few more million dollars on a public safety building. They can do whatever they want. There's nothing we can do about it. The only thing we can do to control, the only thing we can do to influence a future commission's decision in terms of fee or tax increases is to handle long-term cost savings instead of long-term deficits. But my, my, you know, if, if your concern is, is will the fee go up in the future? That's what the current fee, and I, I would swear to this under oath, in court, under penalty of law, in front of God and everybody, the current fee was designed to be increased in the future. That's the point. And if we keep it in place, it almost certainly will be increased in the future as deficits increase. But if we look at these numbers and these, these estimates that are prepared by professionals, by staff, with empirical data and with, with almost a year's worth of research, and they show that they actually give us long-term cost savings and decrease our deficits over time. But that's the only way we keep the future commission from raising taxes or fees, is by putting in long-term cost savings. I mean, that's the whole point of this program in the first place anyway. Pretty certain, that's all.
Okay. Now, Commissioner May, you want to have a, I want to tell you, I want you to move on.
I'm gonna, I will switch places since you just, and I'll go after you if you want. No, we're here, okay. Well, I was gonna, I wanted to clarify a couple of minutes. Ask a quick question. And I, I can say my questions until I've given fifteen more. Because it was, I, I've been here thinking, one of the commissioners said something about a phone call. I know the individual that called, and what I said to that individual was, I just received an email or a letter from a constituent who, we all got copies of it, and I just was reading from that, and I said, "And if you go with what this one person is saying," who's in the, no, we, I'm not gonna mention names, but the person who's knowledgeable, said, "Not all of the items that go to the recycling center are being recycled." And so, I just passed it to the commission. The person said, "Well, how have you known that?" So, "I just got this letter and I, but, you know, it's been a few days." So, I, I believe that what Commissioner Turner was saying was based on what this person said. And I started thinking that it was one person that I spoke to on the phone after we all received an email and a letter. I think we got an email and maybe a letter. So, that's what that was on. The other thing about saying that rushing through from... Because I can, I can go back and think of meetings months ago when I was making comments about, "Hey, I'm not so sure that this is a good idea or a bad idea. I want to get more information on it." But my point was, every, from meeting to meeting, that we were changing things. And that's why I said, "Don't rush through things that haven't had a chance to be vetted." At one meeting, we're saying A, B, and C, and next meeting we come back and we add D, E, and F, and B and C are changed. That's what I'm trying to say, that that part to the public, they feel like we're rushing through because it's changing. I can't help that some people are gonna misinterpret that, but that's, I want to get that out. And then, uh, the questions I was just gonna have with staff, and we can, if you don't wanna address it, you wanna make comments, was that if, if someone could say, if, the whole, most important thing about this fee is keeping my, keeping my, I support recycling. I was on the commission when we put the recycling program in place. I support recycling 110%. I want to see that. And as, as others have said, let's push the recycling program. We're gonna do a sustainability coordinator. Let that person push recycling. But then, the bottom line is what is the most important thing. This year, three years from now, five years from now, and I'm just gonna say, I'm not convinced that, that costs will go down as much as they're saying, because all it is is an estimate. We don't have hard numbers. And to project income or expenses five years down the road is difficult. And that's all I'm trying to say. And I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be called, I don't wanna have somebody attack somebody, well, me or any member of the commission because they disagree. That's just a fact. Mathematically, it's difficult to, to project. And thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm with you. Maybe we'll go on making resolutions on this thing here, Mike. A move is to move forward, whatever. All right, come, come in, Commissioner, about behind closed doors. I never met you behind the closed door, period. No, wait, this, I did not. The $600,000, I said many times that that was to balance the budget. That's the only reason we put the $600,000 in there. That was not behind closed doors. That was not under the rug. I have always said that, that all this, to be, to be, uh, suddenly done, we're trying to balance the budget. And they said we came up with $600,000 less to balance the budget because we had reduced the longevity from that 3% to one. We, we froze salaries. We, uh, the department head... department heads had cut that, that $2 million. So, we, we didn't want to try to have a budget that was balanced with anticipated revenues or we said it was a hole of $600,000. So, the question was to us is, where else can we find money? And they said, the city manager and all said, the department heads are down to bare bones. And so, we want to keep them. And we had a reserve that time of just about 25%. And we said that we wanted to try to keep that because it was going to be about $30 million. So, it was $600,000. So, they said, we don't have a garbage fee, other people have garbage fees. So, then I specifically asked the city manager to look around-